We're all for light again as usual, we apologize. We're gonna call a meeting to order and ask for a motion to approve the agenda that's presented.
I'll make that motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
I'll vote in favor.
Thank you. Motion, Carrie.
All right. So, I've asked Steve Robinson here to give us an update again on wells. It's kind of a continued conversation, but I think that giving us some update and then Josh and Aubrey have asked to meet with me to talk about a possible RFQ to go out to look at some civil, I guess, designs or discussion about where we go from here. So, Steve, tell us what you have so far.
First of all, due my second, we asked Clearwater Well Drilling to come down to Exchance and examine what we had. And after examining the pipe and the wellhead, we determined that we needed to pull that pump to see what we had down in there. So what we had was a bunch of galvanized pipe, pump footwork, and old wire. So, I had them to install horse and half 20 GPM pump, UPDC pump, and new wire. And we hung that pump approximately 138 feet and plugged it up to see what we had. And after running for 15 to 20 minutes, the water became clear. And after running for about 45 minutes, we determined, those guys determined, that the well for Exchance was producing about 27-plus GPMs. And so, we were surprised by that. That's very, very good. And after talking with those guys, of course, all that, you know, all this will have to be engineered out, we're aware of that, but after just conversating with those guys, they said they thought we could probably get by with three to four large pressure tanks. And so, that would definitely be much, much cheaper than putting in a large tank. Did make contact with Alpha Energy Solutions about putting in larger tanks for areas that might not produce as much water. And obviously, there's a lot of unknowns, but they did the best they could with what information they had, and they gave us a budgetary quote, but, which means that it could be, the quote could be very high compared to what we need or want. But anyway, they gave us a quote on a 7,750 gallon tank, which is above ground, poly tank. It is approximately 20 feet wide, 10 feet tall, and they suggested that we would definitely have to build a shelter around this tank due to the sunlight, and you know what happens with your water that sits in the sunlight. But after doing that, they would provide and install new water lines from wellheads to new storage tank, provide and install water lines from storage tanks, domestic water lines, overhead or underground. They would provide and install the electrical circulation pumps and mount it near storage tanks. And all of that would require us building the building and us pouring concrete pad for all that to sit on. They do highly recommend that all of that be engineered so that it would, you know, pass all codes and inspections and all of that. I have the quote here if you'd like me to share with you the quote that they gave us on that.
Steve, why wouldn't we bury those tanks?
I asked about that, and just for the, just, you know, they would look better if it was buried. They said that any type of tank that they felt like they couldn't bury, they felt like that you'd have to have such a, such a strong tank that you would have to put in the ground. They weren't comfortable with burying a tank.
The South Toes buried or above ground?
Above ground.
Is it? Okay.
We actually took the South Toes tank from Kane River and put it at South Toes. But their budgetary quote, like I said, was 130,000 for the tank, circulation pumps, putting all water and all of that.
That's before the building?
Yes, yes. Blue Ridge is planning, the town and the county is planning, right now at this time, if everything goes to schedule, they're planning on doing test wells at Blue Ridge at the end of August. And that's just the latest information that I can get on that right now.
So that would be, yeah. Would that be a source for Blue Ridge and Kane River?
I'm not sure. I'm not sure.
But Kane River's got wells too.
We do have wells at Kane River.
They've got two there, don't we?
I don't know about two. I do know we have some. We have a wellhouse, we have a lot more access at Kane River than we did at Exchance. All we had at Exchance was head.
Yeah.
But the only problem is, is we do know that we would have to have a tank, obviously, at Kane River because we had a tank. But it would be, most likely it would be easier to see what we had at Kane River than it was at Exchance.
Yeah.
All we have to do is get a meter set, get the tire back on the building, run the pump, see what we have.
So you don't have no idea what the flow was at Kane River?
I found a piece of paper written on a piece of winkle pad at the shop.
That's gospel there.
Is it a very clean run?
No, I think it's, honestly, I think it's from the 80s. I did find a piece of paper at the shop that says that it was producing a mile, 1,000 gallons an hour.
I think it'd be, I think it would. Yeah, I can't, I think it's never one of these.
Neil had said there was two wells there and one was abandoned and went to the other.
There is two wells, but I have no idea where the other one is.
Neil knows for a fact, but he didn't ask one. And he didn't say why they left the one well and went to the other.
I know why.
I know why.
Call it your own.
That well down there has got to be river water to be producing that much.
Well, it's like we said, even if we could have potable water, it'd keep us from having to late school early all the time. And so, Donnie, would you recommend then us talking with Aubrey and Josh about the RFQs and the...
For the well construction?
Yeah, and the engineering and that type thing.
Yeah, what were your, what were your estimates that you got, Steve?
Alpha Energy Solutions quoted as price for the tanks, circulation pumps, wiring, and running the line to the school and doing all the necessary value for 130, but, like I said, it was a budgetary quote and he did stress that.
Okay, did they break it down as far as cost of construction, like you said they recommended engineering, right?
They did recommend engineering.
Did they give you a quote on what that would be?
No, sir.
Okay. I think, Kathy, what you probably ought to do is you and Steve and Kim get some quotes on what the engineering costs would be. Obviously, that would be less than 50,000, you could exempt that out from the RFQ. And then, once you contract with your engineer to design it, then bid it out, because you have to bid it out at that price. And just probably get some good quotes on it. So, yeah, that's what I hear, let's go ahead and, and I just, I mean, you could go to this engineer, whoever they, you think you've got, if that's somebody that you kind of tie their commitment and just accept different contracts.
Okay. Any other questions for Steve?
Thanks, Steve.
Thank you. On the next one, I'd ask that we have conversations about how we did receive state from Hurricane recovery and also repairs. And so, we went through the process of the RFQ. We did receive five architects that were interested in the project. And so, I'd ask for Kathy, would you want to take a look and give us a recommendation, any recommendations on this project?
We'll be back 30, 35 minutes.
Okay. We also, with the group a couple of months ago, talking about the trails at the high school and some of the things that they needed updating on and, of course, repairs and so forth. And I'm really interested to see what Shannon and Darren were thinking and kind of see what the requests are from here. So, tell us about this project.
Well, this is part of the, like, the vision, I guess, I started working at the high school 15 years ago, and Ms. Hartzell and Jake Blood of North Carolina High Peaks, you know, got approved to build the trail. And they had a vision of, you know, more trails, basically, and longer trails. And so, I remember hand building that trail so long ago. And so, I've been in contact with this Resilient Trails Network, and we met with Ms. Amos to get an MOU to kind of find funding and work with them to help us make our trail better, make it more bikeable. One thing, I'm a mountain bike coach, and there are no trails in our county that are for bikes. And so, it's been really hard to, you know, even like the Forest Service, you know, they're all hiking or horses, they're not for biking. Anyway, so, we were using Kane River Park for some biking and that's not available. And anyways, the vision would be to have more trails, like each middle school have a trail, the high school, make it longer for cross-country and a little bit more bikeable, maybe more purpose-built and built by a professional. And so, working with this Resilient Trails Network, they found a grant through recreational trails program, and that requires a couple pieces of paper that hopefully you have where the school board would have to, you know, as a legal owner of the property, give site control to this Resilient Trails Network to apply for this grant, to get the money to make some expansions on the trail that were mapped out back with Jake Blood, right? But we'll have a professional trail builder who has built many trails for biking and hiking come do a site analysis and make a map, and then, you know, send that to the state with this paperwork and then start the process of applying for this grant that would be due, the map would be due August 4th, and these couple pieces of paper kind of giving permission for this to, to apply for the grant and the site control. And then, September 3rd would be the deadline to, for me to work with them to submit the proposal and with Yancey County Schools to show, and Mr. Williams, like, where exactly the trail will go, we'll scout out the land and things like that. But it's part of just a longer vision to get kids on bikes, get them outside, you know. My kid did track in East Yancey and was running around the parking lot, it'd be great if they had a trail, you know, so, and have them connecting, like, you know, the vision, maybe Kane River could connect to Blue Ridge or connect to Kane River Park, or, you know, that kind of, kind of stuff like that.
Yeah, it kind of builds on, since the hurricane, Kane River Park has kind of transitioned to mountain heritage. I mean, it's a pretty open campus outside of school hours, and there's a lot of people on campus using their pickleball courts, walking around the track, walking around the parking lots. And so, I think you've got a copy of that map and can kind of see the proposed areas where they're talking about. And it's, you know, not very used, might as well be used for something like that.
There's some erosion control that needs to take place there. But, and so I would have him look at what we currently have, we can't fix every, some of the erosion from Helene, and there's a lot of runoff from that parking lot going down to that, that trail, I can't remember what it's called, the Scout Trail. But this, this specific grant, this first phase of this, would be trying to do that West River Loop Trail. So when you get kind of to the top of the property line where that house is, that whole chunk of land there, it would be really amazing for biking and hiking, and you could go along the river and extend along the river. And then, instead of going straight up to that old Scout Trail, which, that was built by not professional trail builders, so right now it's just water going down there, and it's just, it needs to be kind of eliminated. But there, you could still try to find a new way to get to that old Scout Trail, which is really awesome, and then do this, this Pine Swamp Trail. So then, you know, cross-country, you could do like a full nice loop, get maybe three miles here, and you could do different loops, you know, shorter, longer. So the idea is to kind of start here and just improve what we have, and then keep seeking out funds to have Kane River, you know, have a trail, have East Yancey have a trail, you know, and just kind of build on, like a vision for each school to have.
We first started the conversation because there were so many down trees and erosion, and we wanted to see how we could get cleaned up, and that's why we reached out to them. And then, you know, when the gentlemen continued talking about the fact, wow, we could have professionals to actually design this and to build it and to use grant monies, I thought, oh my gosh, this is like a never-ending goal. It'd be great for our kids, it'd be great for the community, it would just be an awesome opportunity. And knowing that Kane River Park is not there, and so as we partner with the commissioners and Lynn and, you know, what is it that we could do, we see, and I do see very much that Blue Ridge Elementary has become that place where folks are going to want to come with their kids, the high school where they can come, Burnsville Elementary, South Toe Elementary. So, I do see pockets of that, and what can we do to overall help all those communities? And yet, you know, mental health, their overall health. And so, I, this is why I said, like, let's talk about, you know, what you're thinking. And so, that's why I wanted the board to see this vision of that, because, you know, I'm not quite sure what the commissioners will do, you know, overall, what their plan is overall. I think we're all just kind of a year out trying to figure that out and what that looks like and the funding that we have. But I definitely want to partner with them and help in any way that we can, and I just think this is a, one of our opportunities to do that.
So, my question is, of course, the certificate of site control. I guess Donnie will review that. And how long is that good for, is it just during the construction? Or, because, you know, there may be, you know, down the road, I don't foresee anything now, but there may be down the road that we need to use part of that for building somewhere or something, want to make sure we have control back of that, that land.
I'll take a look at it. I guess that's one of those pieces of paper you start with.
You got it, Steve?
What is it?
Or would you just change, change the provision there, I guess, to, I don't know how that works.
I would think the site control that they're after is just during their construction.
Yes.
Yeah.
It's not something they're wanting to maintain.
These are just two things that have to go with the grant application, that you would have to approve, yeah.
And that's what we talked about too, is that if we need to build here, that the trail can be moved or whatever.
And we went over the map, and it seemed like the areas, you know, would be, are part of any plan right now.
Yeah, there's no plans now, but...
Of course, yeah.
But you've got a couple of connectors, it looks like, too, so you could do a lot of different loops. I love it. I mean, I, I think that anytime we get kids out moving and doing stuff, that's, that's awesome.
Oh, yeah, this is not, then I can sign that, I pray out, if I may, God.
But I've talked to several community members that have been wanting to see the existing trail of the high school repaired already.
And there's a lot that I didn't realize we have.
Yeah, I think it's great.
Does this, will this, can we, is part of their, what they do, do they label things on the trail too?
They have, it's like a product that we would be having them do, like an educational trail, but you can pick and choose what you'd like to do.
Yeah.
But the main thing is you're having this nonprofit partner with a professional trail builder.
So they'll map it?
He will map it all out, and so, once we get the go-ahead to apply for the grant, this guy Tony from, I think it's Rocktown Trail Designs, will come, look at the land, survey it, and we'll have a map then that we could look at. And then, I would assume there'd be a process, I work with everyone again to, before that we apply for the grant. It's like, okay, this is what it's going to look like, this is how much, he assumes it would cost, because there's a couple places on the trail now that, you know, it was, it was built by hand for hiking. And so, that's a lot different for a biker. And so, there are some areas, I told him, like, this would be great to have this burned a little bit differently, you know, so a biker could have a little bit more fun. So, it would be a purpose-built trail by a professional for...
But it's going to be multi-use.
Multi-use, yes, same for the community.
And many, and it can be used by lots of different people for different purposes.
Exactly, it won't, it'd be small things that you wouldn't notice as a hiker.
And also, I mean, it, it could be used with the community and the school, like you said, cross-country, they need places to go and...
Could be a home league before we go there.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that would be the idea, yeah, and I'd work with Talbot and talk to him, we've hiked out these areas too, scouted some.
We could walk it five times.
I could, I was just thinking that, this is great. This is great stuff right here. What is the liability of the school system if somebody, let's say, like me, get run over by a bike?
No, it's not.
Because you're not going to catch me on a bike.
You have to go out there and walk around the track. You just have to keep it in appropriate condition, and anything that could cause an accident, or if you know that would be negligent, you need to fix it, just like you do the rest of your property.
Right, okay.
Nothing more.
This is exciting. Thank you.
Awesome, thank you guys.
I would tell you, we'll take a recess, we're still behind about five minutes, so we appreciate everybody being here, appreciate you taking a few time out of your busy stations to get a part of this. I'm going to ask for your dollars, you know, ladies and gentlemen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're excited, good news. All right, so I want to give you some good news, we continue to act on throughout the summer, and I want to let you know about the Western North Carolina Bridge Foundation 2025 Impact Grant. And so, I thank Robert and Darren and several folks for working on this. We're looking at then having tutors at the high school for students who need some assistance. We had tutors throughout all of our schools last year, and so, this will be particularly for the high school, it's $49,500. So congratulations to Darren and his staff, and they're working on the way through and looking at hiring some folks to assist with us at the high school, so we're excited about that. The Lowe's Grant we did apply for and did not receive, however, Lowe's did provide to us a $2,000 gift card, and that will be presented to the carpenter class, we know that there are many schools that they need to continue on, they're building tiny homes for our community and those who lost their homes due to flooding, and so, congratulations again to the high school and Robert and all those who helped with the, with the Lowe's grant. So, we'll let you know those two things.
We have a motion to approve consent calendar as presented.
Somebody, do we have a second? Second.
Motion in favor?
Yeah.
Motion, Carrie, please. Next, uh, simple, general updates.
I'd like to share with you a few things. I know a lot of questions about our federal funds are frozen, like many other school districts across the state, and so, I presented to you a report and letting you know the good news is that Friday afternoon, we received word that we'll get to continue on with our funds with the 21st Century Grant, so we'll be able to have a prior after-school programming and Title I. I checked with Heather, and she checked with DPI, our Title I funds will continue on. So, there's just a few other funds within that that are being reviewed, but hopefully DPI will release those to us soon or let us know. So, those funds were for some of our ELL programming, safe schools, and so, we're just waiting to hear what those funds will, when those funds will be released. Want to let you know Infinite Campus and some charges we are aware of, that in switching from Power School to Infinite Campus, that has been a huge project, to thank all of the principals, all of their data managers for going through and really building those databases. And so, it has been a huge chore also to Ms. Allen for her work in the project, and so, we're just taking it a step at a time and learning, we are the second phase of this, so there was a group of school systems that went through in the first pilot, we're in the second pilot, and learn something all the time, there's all those videos that we've got to watch and all the training and so forth. Sonya's also been a big part of that, and Joni at the high school, and so we thank them for that entire team, for all of their work and everything that they're doing. Also, I want to let you know, I'm learning about Senate Bill 375, Harrison's Law, and so, is to make sure that there is procedures, steps in place, especially for any of our clubs or especially our athletes, there should be no hazing on any of our school campuses, and so, we are aware of that. I feel like our principals, coaches take care of any situation that comes about, but we'll review that this week. And so, I wanted to let you be aware of that. Also, part of that law is the posting of the county office salaries, and so, we will be doing that and being compliant with the law by August 15th. And so, Chris and Dean and Donnie will be giving us any further information as we go about and learning about Senate Bill 375. Also, within that is the students' use of wireless communication devices, and so, those decisions will have to be made at least by January 1st. I know right now, schools handle it differently, or teachers handle it differently, so we'll talk about that more. We do have our administrators retreat tomorrow and Wednesday, and so, this is House Bill 959. And so, we do have different policies on, in place already for wireless communication, so we'll be reviewing those and, you know, working with our attorneys and seeing what that looks like for our students come next school year. So I just wanted to give you those updates.
Number new business, we've got a resolution to close Michael Elementary School, and I believe I have that, I believe Mr. Law was crafting this. The resolution says, "Resolution of Yancey County Board of Education hearing after board authorizing the closure of Michael Elementary School pursuant to NCGS 115C Act 72. Whereas NCGS 115 Act 72 empowers local boards of education with the power and authority to close schools located within the district, whenever and wherever in the board's jurisdiction will better serve the educational interest of the local school administrative unit. Whereas said statute prior to said closure requires the board of education to observe and be bound by the rules set forth in the NCGS 115C Act 72-1. Whereas the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction has issued guidance regarding school closing procedure, which provides additional guidance relative to the stated statute. Whereas the Yancey County Board of Education has caused a study required by the stated statute and has followed all procedures and given all information as required by said statute, and has further provided the subject required by said statute, which public hearing that was properly noticed and held on 21st day of July 25 in the Central Office of Yancey County."
Let me change that from the 21st to the...
15.
I think that's...
We can do that. And held on the 15th of July 2025 in the Central Office, in the Central Office of the Yancey County Board of Education. And now, thereforely, resolved by the Yancey County Board of Education that the board finds any judgment that the closing of Michael Elementary School effective this, the 21st day of July 25, will better serve the educational interest of the Yancey County Board of Education, adopted this 21st day of July 25. this twenty-first day of July twenty-twenty-five.
We'll need a motion, we'll need a second, we need a discussion, we need you to vote.
Do we have any discussion? Do we have a motion to approve the resolution presented?
I'll make that motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Motion, Jerry, thank you. Next up is Blue Ridge Elementary School change order.
Did we have any other documents that were given to us?
No, nothing else was sent to us.
Okay, so I'm gonna, uh, we had that discussion this afternoon, then I went through our paperwork, so, um, I'll check in the morning and see if there's anything else that needs to be added. I know that there will be several change orders just as we wrap up, uh, a lot of our, um, uh, facility plans, uh, in the next couple of weeks, and so, uh, because of that, I've asked that if we could meet again on Tuesday, August the fifth, I've got that down there at the bottom, uh, have a morning meeting for a few minutes, if there are any other hires that the principals need to do, and then see what other change orders we have that come through, so, um, if you check your calendars and let me know if you mind if that's possible, and, uh, and then we'll just go from there, but, thank you.
Give you the discussion on the change orders. We haven't got a copy of them, well, I don't have one in mind.
Right.
We don't have them yet.
I thought we were gonna get some, and then nothing was sent to us, so there's nothing for y'all to vote on right now.
So we don't need to, I'm real proud of you. Department of...
Ms. Bennett is, uh, is not here this evening, she has been, uh, on its state meetings, and, um, so she will be with us again soon, uh, Derek, you have anything from the transportation department?
Yes, good evening, Ms. Alice, Ms. Board, Dr. Cox, uh, since the last meeting, the was approved, or activity bus, they did have one in stock, it will be here before school starts. The little bus, eight-one-thirties been repaired, wait, little bus.
Little bus.
Little bus. Little bus has been repaired and good to go, we had our, uh, uh, inspection a couple months ago, and I think you just sent us our, uh, results, last year we was a thirty-four, and this year we was a forty-four. Uh, when I look at the buses he inspected, it's, uh, shock loose, differential vent needs cleaning, headlight trim loose, uh, differential vent needs cleaning, fire extinguisher bracket loose, uh, shock loose, hood mounts loose, I can attribute that to a lot of the roads we've been around on.
Yeah, you're saying it's been driving on the interior. Shocks loose.
I'm surprised some of you have a hood left.
I will send, send that up, get an email from Maria, she can give you a copy of the final inspection, but there was nothing with brakes, steering tires, that I felt was safety of anything, as far as the transportation, there's, some of the things checked was open orders, uh, uh, orders completed, warranty repairs, mechanical labor, bus inventory, new vehicle service, monthly inspections, uh, pre, uh, prevented maintenance, T D eighteen repair orders, oil analysis, fueling records, uh, bus driver sign-in sheet that they sign in at the school, uh, this year is the first year, then three years, and we've been a hundred percent on that, so that's great to, for the principals, uh, service catalog, state refund reports, uh, technician certification, inventory and physical inventory and director report was all a hundred percent, and when they done the random parts check in the inventory was a hundred percent, so I was very typical there.
Any questions?
Okay.
Steve, anything else for me?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, beginning with Blue Ridge, we've been working with ECS on sinkholes that are around our storm drains, uh, the official report is not available at this time, but, uh, just from, when our conversations with the, with the guys who've done the tests, they do believe that, uh, what's happening around those drains is that from the combination of the huge amounts of water, uh, recovery efforts, and, um, the lack of compaction during the original build, they do believe that that's, that's why we're having the sinking issues, but like I said, we don't have the official report at this time. Um, we did some work this week on cooling tower, uh, we're having issues with the, with the cooling tower, and it's also translating into the heating season as well, um, and that's, that's raising some concerns with, with us tying on to the existing system. So, we've been looking at, uh, Dr. Cox, uh, is well aware of our issues back in the winter, of course, and we've been working with train for several months trying to come up with a solution because the loops are overheating, which is causing the, the, um, the systems to go on shutdown, so, what we're trying to do is to get the system to run year-round, uh, cooling tower and, of course, we would need the heat in the summer, but we do need the cooling tower in the winter, so that that warmer water needs a place to go, uh, if you can go out to the cooling tower and cool some of that temperature, we do believe that when it comes back, that it'll keep the temperature down, but water temperature from the meeting I had the other day should never reach more than seventy-five degrees, and today we were looking at a hundred and thirty, a hundred and thirty-five, so, we are having some issues with cooling and also with the heating, but we're, we're talking, uh, with chemical treatment company to perhaps maybe treat that water that's going out of the cooling tower where it won't freeze, since we don't want it to freeze, uh, in the wintertime, so, uh, we are, we are looking at that. Um, also, I did want to mention this, uh, Mark Leffler, I've been in contact with him, paving should begin, at least repair work should begin, came here tomorrow, uh, they're gonna cut out the sections that are bad, they're gonna patch that back, and then after they get that patched back, they're gonna pave the entire campus, which is truly a gift, uh, because this is, this, uh, Fox has worked very hard as well on getting this to come about, but, uh, hopefully, if not tomorrow, Wednesday, he's gonna start demolition of the spots that are bad, and then start paving over those, over the entire campus. Um, as of right now, the old bridge stadium, um, they started the turf repair today, they took up the old portions, and, uh, the turf, the new turf should be there tomorrow. Uh, in talking with Steve Parks, he has submitted to NCDPI, uh, but, um, we're having to help him with the parts that he is unfamiliar with, and, uh, just some information that he has, he doesn't have access to, so, uh, it's been, I think, in faith, I've been helping him, uh, get the rest of those things filled out, um, near completion on the general TC, uh, outside work, and, uh, I've been talking to Mr. Williams about securing the mold cleanup. Uh, pre-k flooring has been ordered, delivered, should be going down next few days, uh, and then, at looking at Burnsville, uh, we're looking at paving down there this week too, which is gonna be quite a bit of paving, I noticed today they had garrela, which was very nice, uh, he's chanting, looks to be well on schedule, and, uh, as well, Sato, uh, Ms. Serge is working with NCDOT and securing a new entrance to the school, and, uh, just quickly, working on the, uh, storm damage cleanup, we've been talking with Philip Jennings with SDR, and, uh, advise that we complete a notice to proceed, and, uh, I believe, uh, I believe Mr. Lawson has that with him.
If you will get, if you got that estimate put in there, if you can get that estimate, I've got the ball.
Okay, um, we are looking at getting an estimate on the areas that do need cleanup, so, uh, as soon as we can secure that, I'm supposed to be on the phone conference with Mr. Jennings and, uh, Roger Dale tomorrow, they're trying to get something together for us to, to proceed with the cleanup, that's all I have, anybody have any questions?
Steve, what's, what's causing that temperature to be that high in that cold air?
They're thinking that, that water in its circulation is building heat, um, earlier last week, we had the, uh, contact go out on the fan, so after that went out, that created a lot of, uh, heat in that system, so, if water doesn't have someplace to go like in the wintertime, doesn't have a place to go cool and come back, then it just continues to circulate and build heat, but, uh, as of right now, I'm not sure why it's building heat.
When they add that other system onto, will it be another surface area to handle all of it?
See, that's my concern, because, when we talked with, when we talked with Haynes last Thursday evening, um, they finally realized that if we're having trouble on our existing system, that they're gonna be having trouble on the, on the new system, so, uh, we'll try and work with train, the thing about train is they, they lock out all their controls, and you can't just go in and do things, you have to go through train, uh, now the system they're putting in the new building, anyone can work on it, doesn't, doesn't matter, but, uh, we're trying to work with train to see if we can figure out some of that.
How long will it be like that, or will they ever release it?
As far as I know, they never release it, as far as I know.
That's what it is.
It's what you...
Thank you, Steve. And this, Steve, this, this problem just started?
No, um, we've been dealing with this, I guess since you were out there.
I think it's Scott Brooks might have mentioned when I was out there, I think, I mean, according to Joe, custodian, it's been for the whole time.
Since the school opened?
Yeah, I mean, he was just dealing with it himself, you know, and correcting it, it's just when I was out there that he brought it up, and then I...
They talk like it's gonna gradual thing.
Do things get more...
Things got worse, yeah, for sure.
You, you would think as, as the sales get, you know, crowded up or corroded or whatever, you'd think that would be when it start building that heat, and I guess, over the years, it probably have.
Yeah, it's probably have.
Yeah, I think originally it reset like one, and now it's multiples, let's see, it's having to go in and fix.
On a daily basis, on a daily basis, it has to reset.
And there's no rhyme or reason, I mean, we may, they even ran their, you know, schematics or their technical stuff on it, and there's no, it's never the same one, it's never the same time of day, it's all varied, yeah.
Is that there? Is that warranted at all, like if we went back with train, would they replace that, repair that, or?
Not, not now.
Not now, too far gone.
Yeah.
When I first started, um, one of the gentlemen that was working on it said that they put in the wrong tower, it was not for a mountainous environment, it was more more like a flatlands, it was not built for this climate in this area, but, I mean...
Let's put it in anyway.
Yeah, yeah.
But it isn't everybody's turn.
I think we've got it, we're not gonna use it.
What's, um, that's a different question, sir, what are our top lots looking like? Are we gonna be okay at King River and?
We're very close, very close, I mean, King River, I'm not worried about any changes, um, King River, I think we can probably get our T C O, and, um, I think we'll, yeah, I think we'll be able to go to school.
Right.
But there'll, there'll be things that...
My, my worry is when the teachers, when the teachers arrive before, well, before the first day of school, how much are they gonna have to deal with?
We have, we have a lot of flooring in the rooms at King River, and we have a lot of waxing done.
Okay.
In the rooms at King River, and, um...
We did start moving in some rooms, yeah, Reagan was very excited to make me happy to be able to do that today, because all I care about is floors, and then we can start moving into some rooms, so we've got five rooms that we've been able to start moving in two today, we just won't look at the cafeteria and the bathrooms.
Yeah.
Which, uh, which I do think Reagan told me that they were going to start tile in the bathrooms today, so...
That's good.
Yeah, that's, that's a plus.
We're really very fortunate that we got to do a lot of work October on, when the students were out, because I, I would feel very differently about that if, you know, if we hadn't been able to do a lot of that work in state, I think it would push very much of that into the fall, and, um, so, I mean, they're working six hour, they're working six days a week, uh, twelve, fourteen hour days, so I mean, they're really pushing to get it done, and so I thank the principals for being patient, I know it's not been easy, not having air conditioning, or having to move, or think about moving, our teams have been meeting and having discussions, so, uh, um, you know, we're gonna take the team out to look at Burnsville and addition, uh, on, I think, Wednesday morning, uh, so they can see, and, uh, of course, Blue Ridge is coming along, and, um, and you see it's in King River, we're getting there, you know, and so, I, I just gotta keep the faith that they're gonna be able to, to get it all together for us, so, thank you guys.
Ms. Robinson, I got a question, uh, Phase One Stadium, is that still the DPI, they just gonna have to sit back?
I got it, I'm not sitting back.
Yeah.
Uh, Tri-City has taken everything that they're comfortable taking.
Yeah, that's why I did the paper, so, we have no clue.
Uh, just at their mercy right there.
Yeah. Next up on your agenda is Grant Rider, of course, and all his buddies. Ms. Arnold, have anybody signed up for public input?
No.
No, certainly not today. Isn't it amazing we're talking about the issues we're facing, helping the school recover renovations, of course, these are great conversations to be had, um, as frustrating as it is, I know, our condition not working out, contractors never moved out of the house, this is amazing monument what's going on in this county, uh, I had a guy calling me over the back looking for a place to bring in, and, but, he was talking about what's going on in this county, first findings is coming about here that I never thought of happening in my lifetime, and it's because of people like our grant riders, and people out here working day in, day out, trying to get out and find funds, and look for plans and make things happen, we're appreciative of that, but we do appreciate while all the administrative team and everybody that's working, fortunately, this time. Next up is informational items, summer administrators retreat, July twenty-second, twenty-third, next school board meeting, Yancey County District Office, Tuesday, August fifth, seven to eight, eight L, I don't know what day it is now, Yancey County School Employee Lunch, Mount Perry Taco, Tuesday, August twelfth, first day of school, Monday, August eighteenth, Monday, August eighteenth, twenty-twenty-five, Yancey County School District Office, dinner around five thirty PM, work session, six PM, regular meeting, fundraising, twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six, do we have anything else to add? Man, it's awfully quiet.
I think we're age ready a couple nights. It's awfully early, too. Excuse me, what? It's awfully early, too.
Hey, it is early. All right, that tells us something that's going well, we appreciate Mr. Roger coming, we missed him the last couple times, appreciate you putting that forward, uh, want to ask for a motion, don't you, Jerry?
Yeah.
All voting in favor. Thank you.